At this time, I'll call the November 26, 2013 Board of Supervisors to order. I'd like for everybody to please stand for our invocation given by Mr. Supervisor Artie Hall and remain standing for the buzzer lead.
Oh, here's, is that the minister? Oh. He just came in.
I'm sorry. Neil, would you come on and we'll change it. We just announced the invocation by Artie Hall, but we're gonna change it back to you, Neil, if you could come up. I was praying it right down to the wire.
It's icy this morning.
Traffic was heavy on my end, so let us pray. Father God, we want to take a moment this morning just to acknowledge you and all that you are to us, all that you've given to us in this life. We thank you for every person who serves on this Board of Supervisors and their commitment to this county and to making decisions that would benefit the people who live here. Father, we thank you that according to your word, it just, you tell us in Proverbs that we should trust you, that we should acknowledge you in everything that we do and that you would help to make our paths straight. And so, Father, today we pause before this meeting comes into session and before anything is discussed, just to acknowledge you, your blessings, your goodness in our lives and our dependency upon you. We humble ourselves before you today and we ask your blessings upon this time and this county and our nation in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those of you that do not know, Pastor Hawkes is from the Pioneer Baptist Church and we appreciate you very much coming in this weather condition as it is today. Again, let me welcome everyone who's here today. And the first order of the agenda is citizens' time and I don't have the sign up. Thank you. We have just one signee, that's Ms. Linda Myers. Ms. Myers, come forward, please.
Good morning, gentlemen. I was at the joint meeting with the town a month ago and I was very impressed by the Medevac presentation and I was wondering if you guys had done any more research for that and what kind of determination do you have because it would greatly help to benefit the county by having that kind of service provided.
Well, I agree with you and I'm planning to buy the individual if we don't, but I think that's gonna come up during budget time as we prepare for next year's budget.
Okay, but have you done any more research in it or are you just?
I personally have not heard of any. Mr. Dalton, have we done anything else with them?
I've been in contact with Mr. Monday several times. He is putting together some numbers and presentation. This is, I think the biggest thing we're trying to discern between is how many calls were actually non-county residents on the interstate versus county residents.
Okay.
And based off what we think our records are showing, a large majority of interstate calls are non-county. We'd still have, how do we do that? It's a puzzle right now with Mr. Monday, but those would not be covered under what the county would be paying.
Okay, so, but that would not reduce the cost?
No.
Okay, okay. So, I just hope you continue to take it under consideration because it's really important. Thank you.
The next order on the agenda is minutes of the previous meeting. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Now, are there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. Mr. Hall?
I'm abstaining since I wasn't here.
Yes, sir. Let's record show five ayes, one abstention, and one absence. Thank you. Payment of the invoices. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded with pay the invoices. Are there any invoices anyone would like to discuss? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Mr. Tony?
Aye. Aye. And aye, thank you.
Unfinished business and the first thing is the Speedway fire. I assume it's out now and under control.
Ms. Murfs is supposed to be here this morning. You're about 25 minutes faster than I thought you could be.
Well, I'm running.
So, she will be here a little later. She...
Well, we'll hold that until she arrives and let me know when she comes in, please, or if I... Yes, sir. Any other unfinished business, Mr. Dalton?
Yes, sir.
We'll move to reports since we're going to have Sam, Treasurer's Report.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Morning, Sam.
On our consolidated account report, currently we have $40,122,000 in all of our accounts. Our general fund balance at the first of the month was $21,303,000. And our collection of local taxes through yesterday, we're about at 48 percent of our taxes, which means the next two weeks, hopefully, we'll get the other half in. But we've collected $8,679,000 worth of our local taxes to date.
Would you say we're on course, I mean, after you said about probably should we do that?
Yeah, pretty much so, I think. You know, we're about the same place we are. We have the same bunch come in early and pay early and the rest of them waiting to come in the fifth. I think they just like to socialize in the line at my hall.
Are your escrows coming in?
Yeah, escrows doing good, yeah. We're waiting on CoreLogic. That's the biggest one. We got about 1100 taxpayers on CoreLogic and they always wait to the last minute to come in. So, we work it after the fifth is the general rule. We keep the dates on the computer on the fifth and work it when we get around to it. Anybody ask any questions? Still getting a few complaints about sticker stuff. We've had over 700 exoneration so far, so we're gonna get some more, I'm sure. But people still, a lot of people don't understand that we're doing away with stickers. They're wanting to come in and wanting to know when they can purchase their sticker next and, you know, there's still a lot of confusion, it seems like, about the decals is what's going on. But, you know, we keep trying to explain it to them. All right.
Sheriff?
I don't have much, just something that would be of interest to the board unless y'all come up with something for me. As far as the trash detail goes, since we last had a board meeting, the crews have picked up 164 bags of trash. And our year-to-date total for trash is 25,270 pounds. The roads that we have picked up on since the last board meeting have been the around exit 84, 80, 77, and around Carter's Park. We've gotten State Route 690, Cribble Creek Road to Rosenbaum Chapel and up to Fleming Road. We've got Cribble Creek Road to the Gresham County line. We went from the town limits to exit 77 on the State Police side, went from Lots Gap Road to the town limits on the Happy Store, Flying J side, and got a request from Mr. Dalton while I was gone, which apparently was forwarded to Keith Donegan. Cedar Springs Road from Speedway to Cedar Springs, we picked up, we got 40 bags there. So, they operated under some kind of rough weather Saturday, but all in all, they're still working pretty hard. Joe, you mentioned a road to me needed a trash pickup on.
Yeah, 1.1, the next letter's for kids. We wanted to bring that up and talk to the school people. Y'all picked it up and the Russian Club picked it up, the Pioneer did. And we're not gaining on that problem.
You know, it's kinda like...
One of the talks with Dr. Brandon about is to go back and start doing some education with the kids. And that's kind of what I think is elementary kids back in some of those tapes that are available with Iron Eyes, Cody, and those things that used to be on TV, start working on the youngsters and maybe with some civic organization of them. But I'm happy we're picking it up, but it seems to have a life of its own and regenerates itself in the same places. So, some kind of educational effort needs to go hand in hand with this. So, y'all are not gonna win. We're not gonna run out of embassies, but we're not gonna ever run out of batteries. So, I think that we could work with the school division and elementary years to do some education efforts to stop someone with it. So, the way we live is who we are and makes the county look better.
We do have an agreement with National Child Safety Council where they provide us literature for free, gratis.
Brandon, can we get together sometime after the holidays and start up with a program? It's not gonna happen at the schools unless you guys say it's gonna happen.
I'll try to pick up some literature from them, providing they have it.
Right. Thank you.
May I ask, you said on about 7:49 that you picked up in Speedway and Cedar Springs and I may admit, did you go from Cedar Springs to Royal Retreat on that section?
No, we did not have that. That's a long ways. These guys are on foot.
Well, I understand. Well, yeah. The lady who emailed you was on the section between Royal Retreat and Cedar Springs.
Okay. We'll hit the second half then. Okay.
What was your report?
That's better than 12 tons we've picked up since we started this in first part of July.
I have a question. Y'all picked it up in bags?
We pick it up, bag it, call VDOT. VDOT's responsible for picking it up.
Do you make sure that they picked it up off Fleming Road? Because last time, I mean, I went through like two or three pounds a day a week and it was still laying there.
Still laying there?
If they don't pick the bags up, it's just gonna be right back out there just before...
Yeah, there's a lot of raccoons and bears up there. But it was on Fleming Road.
I was kind of surprised when I went through and seen an orange bag. They were like, "Really?"
Yeah, we call them, that's per our agreement with VDOT. We call them and tell them where the bags are and then they have promised us that they will pick them up.
That's what I thought, but...
Anyone else?
Anybody else have anything?
Anything non-trash related?
Thank you for watching and you know, are you...
You're welcome. You're welcome. Yeah, it, we're trying to spread it over the whole county as much as we can. We do tend to have a bigger problem down the lower end because of the transient traffic, a lot of transient traffic. And they don't care where they put their wine bottles and six-packs of beer after they're finished. No. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I assume VDOT may come later because of the weather they...
Forest Service lady is here.
Okay, but I understand lady from Forest Service, Mrs. Ness is here now? Mrs. Ness, you wanna come in and lighten us on the fire?
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the chance to come and visit with you all a little bit this morning. I don't want to take up a lot of your time, but I thought you might be interested in hearing about our landfill fire. I want to hasten to make sure you understand there was no fire in the landfill itself, but it's customary for the first Forest Service employee on the site to get to name a fire. And that was a very handy landmark, so that's why the name landfill fire is what cropped up. So, I'd just like to share a little bit of documentation with you. Yes. This was a fairly, I'll just say extraordinary event for us at Mount Rogers National Recreation Area. We were, we've been tagged as the asbestos district, actually, on the George Washington-Jefferson National Forest. It's been a really long time since anyone can remember a fire of any magnitude and certainly nothing approaching the 1,500 acres that this fire eventually became. I just thought I would describe a little bit about how we first became aware of it. We understand it was reported late at night on Tuesday, the 12th. We've understood since then and have been able to rectify some communications problems between the county and between the Forest Service. And that's been one of the huge benefits, really, to this whole incident was the wonderful support that we've received from With County, especially your emergency management personnel and your information personnel. That was, that was just outstanding. So, I think we've gotten those communications issues ironed out now. We know who to talk to. But the Forest Service first became aware in the early hours of the 13th and upon finding that out, we dispatched an employee to the site and he was just able to determine really very little at that point, but knowing enough that the terrain was very precipitous, the fire could not be seen in the dark at that point. And so, he called for additional resources for backup and then after daylight, we were able to move in and began to locate the source of the fire. Law enforcement officers with the Forest Service did locate the actual origin of the fire, but it's still under investigation as far as what the actual cause was. It wasn't a campfire site, but nevertheless, they were able to find what the, you know, the spot was where the fire originated. So, over the next several days, we contacted more resources. The weather did not work well with us. However, other partners did. The Virginia Department of Forestry, as well as I've mentioned, your county personnel were just outstanding assistance for us. And I have to say the community of Speedway was just wonderful to us. We really, really appreciated their support and their understanding. You know, with the help of With County Public Information Officer, we held a meeting there at the Speedway School on that Friday night and were able to talk to about 63 citizens who showed up. We were so appreciative that people were interested and wanted to find out more of what we could tell them about the fire and about what our strategies were for controlling it and just other opportunities for them to ask questions of us. We have declared the fire controlled. We are very relieved about that. That was a couple of days ago. I have lifted the closure order for that area. It was necessary to close it to public access because of the firefighters in the area and because of the fire itself. And I had to announce that at the public meeting on a Friday night when Gun Season opened on Saturday. And obviously, that wasn't a very popular thing, but for everyone's safety, that had to be done. So, that area is now open again. I just wanted to find out if there were some other questions that you all had and I'd be happy to try to address those at this time.
I have a question. Did you burn a lot of the tour wreaths or was it mostly unbrushed?
Actually, a mixture of both. You know, a fire, as it moves in the landscape, is gonna change in intensity and especially if it's going uphill, it's gonna be more intense. And so, there will be some timber-sized trees that are, that are lost from that. Some of the pine that were on the western aspects, actually, a species called table mountain pine benefits from fire because it has serotinous cones that have to be exposed to a high degree of heat before they'll open and release seed. So, eventually, what we will see in there underneath those types of stands is some nice regrowth. And, you know, obviously, with the hardwoods, they'll, they'll recover and regrow as well.
I have a question. I mean, some different people have asked me, they're gonna go back in and close these dozer lines?
Yes, yes. We're working on that now. That's one of the most...
Would it not be beneficial to leave them so that, and make trails or something so that next time you have dozer lines already there?
Well, as far as, as like use for recreational trails, no. That's something that we don't see as a benefit. Those dozer lines were placed to contain fire. And so, the location of them, in a lot of cases, is gonna be right along the noses of ridges. That's not a good location for a recreational trail because, primarily because of erosion. That's what we're doing right now and will continue to do some of next week with some heavy equipment, is to make sure that those, those created lines are graded, they have the drainages installed in them. We will seed and mulch those so that they'll have recovery. We hope we're not gonna need them again for this purpose. And, you know, after decades and decades of not needing them in that location, we're not gonna plan to have that there again. We do conduct controlled burns, as you all are well aware. In fact, the south aspect of Horse Heaven Mountain where this was is one of our regular controlled burn, burn sites. We may look at this other, the location where the fire was. If it's, if it's useful in the future, we might consider, you know, rolling that into our prescribed program. But it's been a roadless area for a long time and we've just not really done any active management on that slope.
We thank you for coming and...
I'd like to, if I may, present you all with a mutual appreciation.
Okay.
Thanks for all of the assistance that your agencies and your personnel gave us. And I'm also gonna present them to the Speedway Fire Department.
Okay. We'll make sure our emergency management team gets this. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
With County Schools.
Board members, Mr. Dalton, thank you all for giving me just a few minutes to give you just an update of the school systems, where we're going this year. We're off to a good start as far as the school year is concerned through the first six weeks and heading toward the semester break and Thanksgiving and all the other things that go along with the school schedules that go through this time of year. And I'd like to just add that we were able to use our Honeywell Alert system to notify the citizens in Speedway in conjunction with this to sort of get the word out of the emergency management meeting over there. So, just another way that With County groups collaborate with each other and making sure that we get the information out so that we can get as many people informed as they possibly could. Some changes that you've seen across the county. We are currently or already have completed buzz-in systems at our schools to improve on our safety and security at our school buildings. These have been received very well by the parents and the people that come to the schools. I've asked each schools I've gone along, has it actually cut down on the number of visits that you get in the school? And at least 12 out of 13 of them said yes. Spiller was the only one that said, "Oh, no. It doesn't change ours at all. They just keep coming in regardless, even if they have to buzz in." But really, in others, it's really cut down a little bit on the amount of visits and unnecessary visits, I guess is what I'm saying, not the ones that are required to be there. The clerical staff are handling it well, you know, going through the process. They've pretty much got it down pat now on the admittance and if they don't recognize them, provide identification or something like that. Of course, some of the regular ones they see, they allow to come on in. So, we're really tickled with how those systems are working. We did have a couple of incidents you might have read about on bullying and I just want to assure this board, like I do our board, that we do investigate these types of situations. The With County Public Schools, we do not want to tolerate bullying to any extent. We have policies and procedures that we go by. We try to inform parents that if it doesn't happen on school grounds, what their procedures and policies would be to go through that process and we take it very seriously. Am I gonna stand here and say that we eliminate each and every bit of it each and every day? I can't do that, but we do have steps in place. We have anti-bullying campaigns and programs that go through each one of our schools each and every year to try to reinform students on how to behave. We have asked and encouraged parents in this world of changing technology to really supervise what their students are doing each and every day. I mean, from iPhones to Facebook, Twitter, all the different things that are going on. It's real easy to be brave behind a computer and to say things that you don't necessarily or would not necessarily say in person. So, we're sort of a collaborative effort to try to get the schools' education. We have really ramped up our cyber bullying. You've heard it referred as that, of students using the internet or using other electronic devices, you know, to do that, something we didn't have to worry about a few years ago. And just being mean and to other kids. So, we're really putting an emphasis on that this year and making sure that not only does it not happen at school or during school time or wherever they might be together, but also by using electronic format. And, you know, it's real easy for someone to sit there and type something or put something in and somebody just read it and take it the wrong way. I've sent emails and people have asked me, just regular emails, said, "Boy, you seem like you were mad when you wrote that." I wasn't, but, you know, you can read into things like that what you want to. So, we're putting a real emphasis on that. And I just want to publicly say too, that during all these safety initiatives and the bullying that we've gone through at this point, the sheriff's office, I'd like to publicly tell the sheriff how much we appreciate their support, their commitment to the school system. They've been there in every situation that we needed. We recently had an incident where there was an incident in Smith County where it was borderline. We were informed at school board office. We were able to inform the schools at the Smith County, With County line of the potential of a threat. It turned out not to be a bad one, but, you know, their cooperation with us has just been exemplary and I wanted to point that out. And all the safety aspects and anything that goes on the county, from road conditions to safety to, you know, whatever it might be, we count on them for a lot of things. So, just wanted to say thank you to them for their support in doing that. Instruction-wise, With County Schools, all of our schools are fully accredited. We do have four schools who are accredited with warning because of mathematics. I think you all know me, I'm not one to stand up here and hide those facts. They're publicly out there. We're working very hard to improve and to make sure that we make those corrections that are necessary in the subject of mathematics. We have extended instructional time for students to make sure they're getting more hours of mathematics instruction. We have gone through a complete comprehensive professional development that not only includes the teachers, but it also includes the principals. For those of you who are familiar with those roles, they're ever-changing. And the role of a principal in a building as an instructional leader is at the pinnacle at this point in time within careers. You no longer just need a manager of a school building or someone with good public relations or someone who is able to motivate the employees, who is able to be a good person to the students, to handle discipline within the school, to handle graduations and everything else that goes along with it. We've just added another weight to their shoulders of instructional leaders. And not to say that they haven't always been, but the disaggregation of data and determining what areas they need to improve on, the teachers need their assistance more than anything else with all the changes that we're doing. Our professional development this year included with teachers, we are now looking at preloading and reloading vocabulary strategies. We feel like that the vocabulary is causing some of the snags. The mathematics questions that we receive now are not two-step computation anymore. You know, it's not the problem and you just work it out and you put the answer down. You have to read a scenario and understand the vocabulary that you're given and then work out the problem based on what you have written, read. So, we're working on vocabulary with the teachers and how they get that across. We're cooperative learning strategies with a concentration in math, grade six through 12 professional development has occurred. And we're also going to continue to work on math vocabulary strategies throughout the year, leading right up into the test. With principals, we're now trying to improve their increase in use of data, not just at the beginning of the year and the end of the year, but each week. They are to look at the data, look at benchmark testing, see where the strategy, see where the deficiencies might be within the first six, nine weeks and go from... the SOL test, not wait for them to maybe not be successful and then provide intervention after for a retake, but we're trying to provide that intervention before the test is taken. Classroom observations are no longer just for the end-of-the-year evaluation process. They are weekly and monthly for classrooms where we need those instructions taking place, making sure that what we're teaching is aligned with what's being tested and what we expect our students to know when they graduate. And then we need to know, for the principals to know, how are their teachers effectively planning each and every day? It's not a change of teachers always having to turn their lesson plans in, but now it's a combination of not only looking at those lesson plans and then going in to make sure they're followed each and every day, because there's a disconnect somewhere. And it's not just at the high school level. We have to start from third grade up and making sure our math instruction builds on the concepts that they need to be successful in higher math, not only third, fourth, fifth, and sixth grade math as well. Then the division is also with central office. We're going under an academic review, which is about 111 of the 134 school divisions are having to go through this this year in the state of Virginia. We're being trained on the audit tools that come up with the academic review. We have to make sure our curriculum is aligned with the lesson plans they're being taught. We have to make sure that the curriculum is aligned with the assessments that we give it to each end of the year. And then what we're trying to do with the standards is really going in, if that's what the test is about, and if we're testing on the standards, then we have to make sure we understand the standards and unpack them, what's really inside of those standards and what concepts we need to teach in mathematics. We feel like we're making great progress in the other areas. We have satisfying test scores in reading and history and science. So we're really putting an emphasis on mathematics and really trying to make improvements for the future. We feel like we're being successful, and we feel like we've hired the instructional staff who have a passion for learning, a passion for students, and a passion for kids. And the other part, we can then teach if they have a deficiency in that, to go through that process. So instructionally, we're really working hard. It's a big part of what we do. And having said that, I want you to understand that once we get this down, that's not all we're teaching, okay? I stress every year in the opening convocation, at other times, we need to teach beyond the SOLs. We need to teach the heritage of With County. We need to teach other things that these kids might need to be familiar with as they move on into life. So it's not all about the SOLs, but we have to make sure we understand the standards and what we need to teach the students, and then teach beyond them even further. Budget-wise, you know, the outlook for this coming year, it's fastly approaching as we're in November and December. Just two or three things that everyone's looking at is the potential of, I'm sure you've seen the recommendation from the board of directors on the teacher's VRS rate. They proposed a potential up to, close to 3% increase in the VRS rates. I've heard in a recent trip, when I talked to some legislators, I've heard different varying opinions that we're going to try to reduce that down to half. We're going to try to extend it from six years to 10 years to try to, you know, blend in what the VRS needs to get back to be 100% fully funded for their obligations in the future. I've heard that we might not have any increase this year. So I look for something maybe in the middle as we go through this process, but just to give you an idea, 3% increase in our local contributions for VRS would be around $600,000 for With County Public Schools. So you can look at around $200,000 per percent increase in the VRS for the teacher rates on the VRS coming up. Health insurance is always a concern. We've gone through all the changes. And to be honest with you, in With County, we already had a policy in place that part-time was defined as less than 30 hours. It's been in place in With County for a long time. So we didn't have a lot of work to do, but we did have some hourly reporting that had to be taken care of and a few employees that we had to make sure did not surpass that 30 hours. So we're following all guidelines that are necessary as far as that is concerned, as far as offering health insurance. We'll be looking at lots of different options. Mr. Dalton and I, I think we have an insurance committee that will meet later on in the year as we discuss, you know, the insurance that comes up. I do not have any indication yet of what the insurance rates will increase to. We expect those around February. And as you know, we're in a joint effort together in the health insurance. So I did look at the first quarterly report, and it was much more favorable than last year at this time as far as the health insurance usage and the agencies, the board supervisors and the school board. So that could be a positive sign for the future as far as health insurance is concerned. Other things as far as budget, we're really, as far as other items preliminarily, just trying to hold the line, you know, not propose any increases, not propose any additions to. We feel like we've cut our staff down to where, you know, we're basically at the baseline, the very lowest that we can possibly go. And so we're just trying to hold that line and not ask for any increases in any other areas potentially up to this point. The only other area that the board has considered preliminarily is just a step increase for employees, no percentage raises, just if you're on, you've taught for 21 years, then you would go to the 22nd year. And of course, we'll talk about a lot of that as we get further into the budget process. Capital improvements and projects, obviously, we've got two major projects going on at this time. You know, the two projects based on the general contractors are sort of flowing in different ways. Sheffy is moving along a lot, much larger project, you know, with the amount of money, over $5 million in that project and an addition of the community center. And Jim was there yesterday, and the steel's been set on the roof for the gymnasium, and the decking's been placed up there. They had a big crane out there yesterday putting as much stuff as they could, I guess, up on the steel frame. It's moving along very well. We've relocated two sections of Sheffy already. In other words, they finished both of the open classroom areas that you all visited. They now have classrooms in them, so the students are in those rooms. But at Sheffy, it's sort of being looked at as a total project. We're getting the areas finished good enough to where we can move the students in and start demoing on another area, plus the addition of the canopies and the gymnasium from the construction side of it. At Royal Retreat, a smaller project, it's sort of being handled as three million, two jobs. You know, we're more complete in the areas that were finished, like you'll see windows replaced at Royal Retreat. You'll see doors replaced at Royal Retreat, whereas at Sheffy, we got the floor ready, the infrastructure ready enough to teach classrooms in, but the windows haven't been replaced yet. They're going to be done at one time. So when you look at this, you might have a lot of expense, you know, upfront for all the materials that they're bringing in, because at Royal Retreat, they're sort of trying to get that section ready and then start demoing on the other room. Of course, at Royal Retreat, we've got a lot more room to move students around, too. Sheffy, while we're doing is moving them up and down the hallway. At Royal Retreat, the sixth grade has been relocated down to the classrooms. The main office has been relocated back to its original area. We're working really hard to try to get that open for parental access. We're still going to continue to drop off the kids at the old gymnasium entrance, but we're trying to get that ready for parental entrance at least into the main office. So everything's working fairly well. You always have problems when you deal with renovations and constructions, but Dr. Poole's been a big asset, been there each and every day and on the site each and every day, and I'm there three out of five days myself. So we're taking a lot of time and effort to go down and make sure things run as smoothly as possible. We're hoping to get the gymnasium dried in by Christmas. We'll see. But it's, you know, something we're trying to do, and at least that's a goal, what we're trying to do at that time. So I'll take any questions. That's just a brief update of some things we've got going on, some issues we've covered.
One.
Sure.
I seem to have read an email not too long ago about enrollment. Where are we as far as enrollment, what we anticipated and so forth?
Sure. And I had that on my notes, and I forgot it. Thanks for bringing that up. Our enrollment is down. We're down about 46 students from what we projected. We're right now 41, 81, which is down from 42, 10 to 42, 20 that we were looking at somewhere in that area. We did receive the local composite index projections for the next biennium. With County went down from 42, 03 to 31, 84. So, excuse me, 32, 04 to 31, 83. Yeah, yeah, it's a big drop. Yeah, a point. We'd have really been seeing, yeah. I got my four and my three mixed up. But yes, that is a drop, which obviously helps us. You know, I've talked the last four years about the local composite index going up, so I don't know how that calculates as far as dollars is concerned, but we're looking at not being able to project over 4,200 students in the future for right now. The big drop was at Spiller. We have one less kindergarten class there, which is usually 24 kids. So we can pick out a few other areas where we might add four, or five, or six, or seven, but Spiller was the biggest immediate impact to our enrollment this year as far as kindergarten enrollment.
Anybody else have questions?
I have a question about the bullying.
You said that you're letting parents know what to do if it's outside school. Is that on a case-by-case basis, or is that sort of a thing? Because anytime something like that comes up, and the school's not involved at all, and it happens at home, the school's in an unfair position because it gets pulled in, just simply because they're school-aged kids. Is it-
It's case-by-case.
It's just case-by-case?
And we try to end the cyber bullying. Mr. Hausman, or Dr. Hausman, one of the things that we're doing is trying to say is for the kids to notify parents, but that usually doesn't happen. You know, we usually have to tell the parents if they come in and make an issue.
Well, the kids at school and cyberbullying, and I understand that's your, yeah, your area, but, I mean, they don't have access to Facebook and things like that at school, and yet I know that when something happens, people blame the schools. Just a short one, I once had a lady call me and was upset at me because her son had got caught shoplifting at Kmart over the weekend. It's easier to blame the school. So, you know, I guess what I'm asking is, is it better to go case-by-case? Is it better to give everybody a little bit of information?
Correct.
And that's just something for you all to consider.
Sure, and I understand, yeah, we could consider something to go home to students that hopefully they would make it home to parents. PTO meetings and PTA meetings at the elementary schools are still fairly successful, you know, at the middle and high school level, unless there's a program involved, there's usually not that much participation at this time. But that's something definitely we could consider to let them know. Just do a bullying fact sheet, you know, to send home to all the parents and say, or maybe with the report cards one time, and say, should this happen, and it's not school-initiated, then what are your steps to do that? And I could work in conjunction with the sheriff's office to see what's the proper procedure for them.
I don't know if that would help or not, but-
Could, it could. It's sort of like what you're talking about. Anything that happens with a high school or middle or elementary-age kid, the school ends up involved, whether they are or not.
Mr. Haus, I saw your hand up.
About the discussion. How are we with the drawdown comparing the scheduled values to work being done? Where are we in the financial picture of the drawdown?
I'll let Dr. Poole speak to the financials.
We're in pretty good shape right now. A lot of the drawdown at Royal Retreat, based on the HVAC equipment that we have on-site, basically everything HVAC-related at Royal Retreat is there. Some installation up to go, most of the ductwork, all the equipment is there. I think they're about 95% as far as the equipment that they have in place or short on-site. That's one of the big-ticket items at Royal Retreat. At Sheffy, it's been more of a progression. There hasn't been as many materials short on-site. A lot of HVAC has been in place at Sheffy on the upper end of the building. The lower end of the building is still being run via the boiler, but it will be all roof cop units at Sheffy when it's completed. The upper area around the old gym and the open-area classroom that was closest to the playground, all of that is on the new system, and it's basically from the library back to the cafeteria that's running all the boiler on the lower end. That equipment has not been installed yet because of the ceiling cuts and everything else that has to take place in order to drop the lines in. Over the winter, that's going to be touch and go in that area because we have four classrooms at Sheffy that are being renovated. That's all we can give them simply because of the locations of the cafeteria. Students have to pass through. We can't completely close that area now. So some of that is being scheduled at a later date. We have less traffic in the hallways to try to get those in place. And the open-area classrooms, we were able to completely shut those areas off so they could get that equipment placed.
Are the line items on the scheduled values broken initially to show cost of material and cost of labor and installation? Or are they lumped as one number?
It's one of the one numbers. If we have any questions, we have it broken out. The HVAC at Royal Retreat was one item that we recently had broken out to show the labor as opposed to the total amount of materials that were being used. Anytime we have a question, we have it broken down to a greater degree for any deal with the pay. There have been more questions at Royal Retreat simply because of the way that they are perceived with the project rather than at Sheffy. Each area is broken down as a line item, not into materials and like the lump sum.
Last question. How are you with unresolved change orders?
Good shape right now.
Meaning there's not any?
There are.
Okay.
We've had very few change orders to date. Most of the time, well, in any renovation, you never know what you might have to open up a wall, and that's typically where we've been with the change orders. We haven't had to make as much of an addition.
Has the architect gotten you a new approved cement package back yet?
We're waiting on one item for the warranty on the 8 mile.
It's not like we didn't know that and what's going to happen.
But that's the one item on the package that we're waiting for.
Thank you.
And if you do go into Royal Retreat, we have one, the one issue we've had down there with the finished end is on tile. So if you do see it, just basically look at it as we're renting that tile for the rest of this year until it's worn out and then-
Put the white color under the I in Indians.
So there is some tile problems, but we're aware of it. They know that it'll all be changed out, and, you know, we're basically just using it until they can tear up this summer.
Well, that is an educational facility. Did the subcontractor learn anything about where you started? It's pretty important.
I'm not sure that subcontractor did learn that, Mr. Haus, just based on the conversations we had, but you can tell by going into buildings, you know, my, the way I'm looking at it is the GC at Royal Retreat is looking at it as three 1.1 million jobs. I don't know if that's all the capacity they can handle or their understanding of it, whereas at Sheffy, they're looking at it as a total $5 million project. Whereas at Royal Retreat, they're trying to do a million dollars' worth of work here. And it's a more finished supposedly product when they move to phase two and into phase three, and I just don't, I don't know yet. We haven't asked that point-blank question. We've asked a lot of questions, but we haven't asked that point-blank question, but that's the way I'm viewing it, that that might be all they can handle, and we'll keep that in consideration in the future.
Anybody?
Chairman, this might be a good time to ask him to get together with Mr. Dalton, and let's see if we can develop that educational program. And the sheriff, I truly believe we're not going to win the battle over trash until we change the way to think about trash.
I think we've already, you sent me an email, and I've already assigned somebody to be on the committee. Whenever the, we're getting, I'm getting an email from somebody saying the meeting, and I've already assigned somebody at central office to be on that and first of all, in educating students about litter and those ends. Who's heading that up? I can't remember who the email's from.
I think I sent the initial.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
I got a follow-up from that. So we'll be glad to do it. We're trying to decide what area the, you know, school day or time or health and PE class or where we would do it. It will not be during math instruction. They will provide that trash instruction, I promise.
In the elementary years and-
If they knew that 24, 25,000 pounds was 12-plus tons, we'd be ahead.
In the elementary years, is there any time for, how do y'all handle civics now and later, I guess it's still called government, or it may not be?
Oh, no, we still have, we still have ample instructional time for all the civics and social studies, all the social studies topics are covered, including a new finance and economics class.
So they go down to the lower grades to start?
They do.
Long wind line, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to, Dr. Poole just mentioned to the bus drivers, when you have any, any of the trash areas, they're traveling across all the county roads, and if they could get that emailed back into the sheriff's office or how you want to work that, that would be great, because that way we can find the areas to work.
Well, that's good.
That's a good idea. Thank you. Wes, appreciate you.
I'm lucky if I can see the orange bags laying on the side of the road, busting at the kids, let alone look for the trash on the road.
We don't have any discipline problems.
I don't see any other questions.
I'm lucky if I can see the orange bags laying on the side of the road, busting at the kids, let alone look for the trash on the road.
We don't have any discipline problems.
I don't see any other questions, so, Dr. Brennan, Dr. Paul, we appreciate you being here and giving us this update. Thank you very much. I'm going to skip around a little bit now, and we're going to go to committee reports and save the board supervisors for a little time later. And I'm going to start with budget and come back to water, so Mr. Font has to be here from Social Services. But Gary, you want to go ahead and start with yours, and then...
Sure. We met on November 21st and make the following recommendations. One is to accept the Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant in the amount of $1,521.22, and to amend and appropriate that same amount.
That's coming from Budget Committee, needs no second. Does anybody have any discussion or surf? Would you like to say anything toward it, or the Bulletproof Vest program?
Bulletproof vests are, once you buy them, and they're actually bulletproof, they call it bulletproof just for convenience, but they do have a limited line. So this is an ongoing program that we've had several years to replace the older vests.
Anybody else? Then I'll call for the vote, and we'll start with Mr. Hall.
Ah.
Ah. Six, one absent.
Okay. Second thing, to adopt the accounting policies for cash handling as presented, and in your packet, there is information about changes in the cash handling policy of, with county, and it kind of codifies it. It's been put together by Mr. Grant, and the committee recommends that we approve and adopt these.
Those were in your packet to read. If anybody has any question concerning these? Mr. Grant, do you want to say anything at all concerning?
This will provide the county a better protection of cash and protection of the staff that works with cash.
Well, seeing them, we'll call for the vote. Mr. Tony?
Ah.
And ah, six, zero, one absent. All right, the next one, we had a, I was serving on that committee because Mr. Reed's being out of town so that we could have a forum, and we have a request from the Department of Social Services for $130,000, is that correct? For, I'd like Dr. Font to come to the mic and explain what this is for. This is hopefully carryover money that you had last year.
It is, carryover money.
And I understand a lot of this came from, and you correct me if I'm wrong, with Comprehensive Services savings?
It is Comprehensive Services savings.
Okay.
And it's also to address the shortfall that we had in our original request for our budget in April. And I wanted to take just a few minutes to talk about some changes in our budgeting procedures this year, which had a significant impact on our budget and is one of the driving forces for the increase in our budget, as well as several other factors that impacted. for pass-through funding, and this was probably the most significant change in budgeting for our department in the last 30 years. And I wanted to give you an idea of how significant, from a budget perspective, that really is. In the past, we had two regular budget lines for general administrative funds, one for eligibility and one for services. Each of those had a 20% corresponding local match rate. We also had a pass-through budget line for each of those. On the eligibility side, the match rate for that was 50%. On the service side, it was 89%. This year, the department went to a single-pool pass-through rate requiring a 76% match rate. So I wanted to work through just a brief example before you give you an idea of how significant that is, and this is based on a $10,000 of pass-through funding. Last year, we spent about 93% of our pass-through funding in the eligibility area, which was a 50% local match rate, and about 7% in the service area. Based on that and a $10,000 pass-through, it would cost the county about $52.73 in local money to match that. This year, at the single-pool rate, that same $10,000 would require a local match of $7,400. So that's on $10,000, so if you extrapolate that out on the amount of pass-through funding that we have, you see this is a significant increase in local match rate. We had a little over $200,000 last year in pass-through funding.
Can I ask you an actual question?
Yeah.
Is this state a federal fund?
These are federal funds that pass down through the state to locality.
It puts more of the burden on the local county.
Right.
But the federal government dictated this in the pool?
They recommended it to the state that it would...
The state adopted it?
Correct.
So the local county had no...
They had no option as to go with the policy.
Now, the state did recognize that it was going to be a cost to the locality, and
they did provide some additional administrative funds to offset some of that increased cost. So the main things that were driving our budget was this increase in the local match rate for the pass-through funding. In addition, we moved into a new facility October of last year. In the past, we had not budgeted because we didn't have any facility costs associated with that. This year, we have about $80,000 in amortized costs for the facility, as well as an approximate $15,000 increase in utility costs associated with the move. In the past, we also had legal costs that were, had been funded through our CSA budget. They should have been allocated through our regular DSS budget, so that money has been moved back into our budget, so that was an increase also in the budget. And finally, the additional local match to draw down the additional administrative funds that we received as part of the single pass-through rate. But those were the main drivers of the $130,000 that we're requesting through the CSA funding. One thing I might add, our department, just to give you, Kevin, an update, I've been here for a year now, and in the last year, we've had a turnover of about 25% in staffing and just through attritions and other things. We've also undergone, beginning October this year, an eligibility modernization program that came about through the Affordable Care Act and the medical stuff. The state modernized the eligibility system, and so the first part of that started with the Medicaid program, and in the out-years of '14, '15, '16, the idea was that all eligibility programs will fall under this new system. But in the meantime, until that's done, our workers are working out of three computer systems. They're working out of the new system, plus they're working out of the two old systems. So it's creating an additional burden on our staff. We're down two workers in our eligibility unit and two on our social work side. Our social work caseloads, as you might imagine, have increased dramatically over the last year. We no longer see dirty houses and those types of things come through our CPS side. The types of CPS cases and the kids that were taken in foster care today have multiple issues and multiple problems that we're dealing with. But we're trying to make a paradigm shift where we're not just dealing with the cause, with the problems, but we're trying to deal with some of the causes and changes to the families so that we can affect the next generation of kids and parents, not just this one. Every time we make a change to a family, we make a cost savings on the CSA side. So as we, for every dollar we spend on the DSS side, we see a savings on the CSA side. And I think that's reflected in our budgets from last year. While our DSS budgets have increased, our CSA budget was reduced 20% from the prior year. So I think we're making some strides and some changes and going in that direction. Every child that we keep out of foster care is a $30,000 savings in a regular foster care setting. It's over $100,000 savings in a residential setting. The average cost of a residential care facility for a year is about $110,000 per child. So every child that we can make a difference, keep out of foster care, is a savings to the county. We've also been able to reduce our legal costs by 55% in the last year. And one of the main things that we've been able to do is reduce our congregant care rate. When I came last year, our congregant care rate was at about 22%. The state goal was 16%, and those are the children that are in residential settings that we talked about where the average cost is $100,000 per child. Today, our congregant care rate is 7%, which is probably one of the lowest rates in the state. So I think we're making savings on our, on our foster care and our CPS side, and I think we've got the staff. So I think the $130,000 will not only help us maintain what we've been doing, but reduce costs on the other side. Without the funds, there's, of course, there's a cost to everything. We won't, we won't have the funds to make the facility cost for the amortized cost, which is money that is returned to the county through reimbursements. And we will also be required to furlough two of our contract employees near year's end, our job readiness and GED instructor, and also our IT support personnel. So appreciate the opportunity to come here today and be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Adoption's a way up, but...
Right. The governor has a goal of 1,000 adoptions by year's end, and as a state, we're about 86 short in reaching that goal. But as an agency, we've had 11 adoptions this year. So we're, there's a certain amount of kids coming to care that we're not able to return home, and for whatever reasons, particularly older kids, are harder to place. So once the rights have been terminated and the city can get them adopted in a permanent home, the better the outcomes are going to be for those children. So we've been very successful in making those adoptions.
Do I have anything? Yes, so...
Louis, you said that you'd save 50, 55% in legal costs. What's your true legal cost you project this year?
I don't have that there. Probably $50,000, $60,000. I think we spent around $120,000 last year, and we're lucky to have that much this year.
And the reason I ask that is that between your cost and our cost, it may be a budget thing that we might save money just hiring a full-time county attorney that did both those.
I think we discussed that before. I think it's something budget really needs to look at next year, because I think y'all would agree.
Yeah, that's one of the things. We can't go to court without an attorney, or the judge won't hear the case. It's just gotten to that point where...
And you mentioned that at the last there, the facility costs, if you didn't get $130, you couldn't pay us, so...
Well, I mean, we could, we could run it through the cost allocation plan.
Right.
But the problem with that is there's that two-year lag between when it's submitted and when the reimbursement comes down.
So in a sense, that's $80,000 just making a circle?
Well, I think what he said is on the cost allocation plan, you're paying it now. If you ran it through the cost allocation plan, it's the delay of almost two years before you get your money.
Right. And the reimbursement rate's about the same, it's just when you receive the money back to the locality.
The $130,000 savings in the CSA, I mean, you're talking about wanting to use that savings to offset the single pool?
Part of it is to offset the single pool increase as a result of the increased local match rate. Primarily, the other half of that is to pay the facility charges, which we did not incur prior to this year. A lot of our services, I mean, if we get a child into foster care, if we take an adult into an adult home, we're mandated by the federal government and the state to provide those services, and there's an associated local match that comes with that. So, I mean, we're obligated to pay it whether it come out of administrative money or whether it come out of pass-through funding.
Anybody else have a question?
As a state, the state hasn't given any new administrative money since 1988, other than to offset this single pool calculation, but it's been that long since there's been any new administrative money.
Does that answer the questions that you had in Budget Committee pretty much? Artie?
Hmm.
I can do this either way. We can refer it back to you guys, look over again, or we can have a motion now and move forward.
I'll make a motion. We just allocate the $130?
You have a second.
I'll second it.
Okay. We move and second it. Any other questions?
One question.
Yes, sir.
You talked about the two contract employees. What do they do? And where are they stationed?
The one contractor provides job-ready and services for our view clients who are in a work program, and also provides GED programs. And here recently is providing services to our youth who are in independent living services. We have 52 foster care kids at the moment, and about half of those are a little bit more in the age of 14 or older, so that they, they fall in that age where they're going to age out of foster care at 18 or 22. And one of the initiatives that we've done is use some of our existing resources, particularly our view program, our work program, to provide some job readiness skills, to provide some budgeting and some goal setting, some types of programs that will help, help offset some of their, make some of the better outcomes when they do age out of foster care, because most of the outcomes for youth who age out are not good. The second one is for our IT position that does all of our computer work during the age group. And he's a part-time employer.
So I thought the Vida did all your, is this up and beyond the Vida person?
That's beyond the Vida person.
Do you have to answer anything?
One other question. Mr. Font, you said that, or I thought that you said, that the $80,000 for the facility was not budgeted. I was just curious as to why.
Well, it was, it was in our original budget that we submitted.
Submitted here.
Right.
Okay.
So I guess I'm...
So it was?
It was in our original budget when we submitted it to the county.
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay, are we ready to vote? Mr. Hall?
Ah.
Mr. Haus?
Ah.
And ah, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Six, zero. Water Committee?
Water Committee met on November 19, 2013, and makes the following recommendations. Adjust the sewer charges on the October and November 2013 bill for the Fortisville BD station. This is because they had a water leak. It actually makes their second water leak, and we can't adjust their water bill, but we figured this water didn't go through the sewer system, and there's no, no reason to charge them for it if it didn't go through there.
Okay. Any questions? Again, coming from committee, we not need a second. Mr. Tony?
Ah.
Ah.
And aye.
All right. The second is that a contract be executed with Dana Richardson to allow her to pay delinquent bills.
Okay, I think there was a copy of that contract in the packet. If I had any questions?
You had information on that if you need more? We'll discuss it if not.
Okay, we're ready to vote. Hall?
Aye.
Aye.
Six, zero.
Mr. Chairman, may I say something?
Yes, sir.
Those contracts are going to be enforced. If you miss a payment, then you disconnect.
And on that, I, I had a call from a lady that she had a leak. She fixed the leak, adjusted the bill. She had another leak in her bill, $500 some dollars, and she wanted to know if she could pay $100 on the bill. Would you look at it?
I, I did, and I didn't bring it with me, Coy, but I, I have it on my desk. We, I print out the bills. We'd, we'd adjusted it down. And the way I understand the request is she'll pay the bill. She just wants under a contract, and she'll pay $100 extra a month. Is that...
She didn't say $100 a month. She didn't say eight. How much is it?
508.
How much is the most? 99?
Actually, I don't understand exactly her bill because she's using 60 or 70 dollars worth of water a month, which is almost impossible for her size family.
The worst thing about it to me is she got four kids and she... She got to disconnect on the third week this month.
Could I ask that, maybe right after this meeting, before we, you know, break for lunch or whatever, that, that the water committee meet for just a, a couple of minutes? I had a couple of questions on the Spiegel water line that I'd like to, to check out with the committee, too. Would that...
And we could bring... I'm here all day. How long, however late you want.
Well, and then that way, if we met after this and then we want to take any action, we could do it...
When we come back in session.
Yeah, when we come back in session. Okay.
Coy, you can bring your thing up at that time. Y'all can get more details as far as the water bill and how much it is already.
That'll be okay?
Okay. Does that conclude? I know you have open-ended proposals.
I was gonna say, we have another one. Evidently, we, evidently, we left this one out of the last month. Because the water committee met on October 17, 2013, and reviewed the open-ended architectural and engineering proposals. And the committee recommends entering into contract with all those who submitted proposals as follows. Anderson and Associates, Davis Martin Powell, Hughes Associates, Hurt and Profit, The Lane Group, Pedden Borts, Pillar, Thompson and Litten.
And? Yes, sir. Mr. Hale?
I've got a comment.
I'm more doing good, but I enjoy doing it. When you hire everybody that submits on a project, it says you didn't do your job. I mean, everybody's not equal, and I know that goes on. But those companies that put together a package and submitted, it cost them some money. And for you to just hire all of them is that we couldn't make a decision. They're not unique people there. Most of them do the same work. So, I think you're just ducking the issue when you hire everybody that submitted. Go ahead, Mr. Dalton.
I want, I guess, explain the reasoning. On the open-ended contract, it's not a contract. It allows us to take proposals from each and every one of those that are interested in a specific project. If we have a problem that we want to PER, we'll submit that out to each and every one of those, and then we pick the best one out of that.
So, it expedites?
It expedites. It allows us, the procurement's already out. We get out and we get a proposal, and the best proposal out of those for that specific work that we're going to do, then we pick from that and then bring it back to the water committee. And we've done that numerous times, and it's allowed us to move forth projects without delay of 30, 60, or 90 days.
Mr. Hale? That's interesting.
I've been doing those for 30 years, and he knows it. It still means that the committee didn't make any selection if you just hire everybody that submitted. Is that right or wrong?
We're not hiring them anyway. We're...
Well, you are. You're doing a contract on as-need basis.
We're not entering a contract.
I know.
We've procured. These, these groups have presented. And then from the, from that, they'll have the opportunity on the specific for us to get the best of that group.
But there is no selection process of who should be on the group. You said we're, we're giving everybody the same opportunity that submitted. I'm not going to win this argument, but I'm enjoying it. That's the way y'all do business. I don't think it's right. If you were buying any other service, and everybody that submitted, whether you're buying it or not, would all of them be an on-call?
Well, you're not buying anything right now, Joe. You're pre-qualifying people to make a submission, whether they were qualified or not, to do that work. Every one of these people were qualified to do that work.
Well, my, my concern is that you're not going to always be here to lead this group of staff. If you continue to do these things, who makes that hire? Who makes that decision? Is there any tracking of who does competent work and delivers on time, stays within budget? When you do these, whatever you want to call them, prequalifications, I think that's the time you look at people's qualifications and how they perform. And when you just hire everybody that submits, we're leaving out, leave out the word hire. Strike the word hire.
Okay.
When, when you put everybody on the prequalified list, just because they sent a package in, it's just leaving one of the intricate parts out of it. I'm, I'm done.
Okay, I think your point's been made, and it's time to move on. Thank you. We haven't voted as of yet. I was asking for the vote.
Oh. I was gonna say, if you was asking for it.
Are you ready, Mr. Tony?
Yeah.
All right. Aye. Mr. Housen?
Well, I'll vote aye, but there's one on there that I would, would take off. No?
Aye.
And aye. Vote is five, one, snap. All right, that'll move us back to VDOT. Jeff, glad you could come in. I bet you've had a busy morning, haven't you?
It hasn't been too busy.
That's good then, maybe. Roads are clear?
At this point, I believe so. We had some icy spots, but nothing major, so I think we dodged a bullet. We were right on the borderline to where it could have got pretty ugly pretty quick, so...
What's your forecast? Do you have any? I saw plows when I came in, still sitting at the interstate.
Right. I believe tonight, a lot of what we had last night, where I think the temperature is supposed to stay above freezing maybe till after midnight, and then it's going to be teetering right on 32, so it's going to be the same thing.
Same county in the morning.
Chance of some snow tomorrow morning, through tomorrow, so I'm anticipating we'll be working tonight as well as tomorrow night, so... Nothing major, just enough to be a concern, keep us, keep us out there, so...
Okay.
Appreciate the opportunity to come, and I'll give you a little update on some of the projects that we've worked on. 619 St. Peters Road, the one and a half mile section, we have completed that project. 652 Johnny Lane, we have had our pre-construction meeting, and the contractor has a start date slated of December 5. I believe that's... I did have a question, and one of the reasons I wanted to come. With County, had applied for some revenue showing projects, and they were approved, and we're, we're waiting word on, from the county to whether we move forward with it, if y'all are still interested. I've got Bertha Farms, Barwallow, and Connors Valley, and I just want to touch base with you all and see where we stood. I think we're waiting on news on the right-of-way, is the county going to be able to get the right-of-way to complete the projects, so I'm going to start with Bertha Farms. Y'all?
Steven, you're working there?
On the Bertha Farms, I have spoken and given a petition. Ms. Mary Edwards, who was the point person for that area, I have not heard back from her. I would assume that probably means they were not successful, but I can follow up with her and check and see. They do not think they would be able to get their 50% of their land mass and their land, 50% of population for transportation service district, but I will follow up with her and see.
Okay. Barwallow.
Last time I heard from y'all, you had questioned whether that was a right-of-way or not. What's the status of your thinking now?
I believe you talked with Mr. Cox, Matthew, and my understanding of where we're at, that y'all, that there was a skewed right-of-way to do the project. However, it did not qualify under, under the rules that it was a, has been used as a public use. And I believe he mentioned you were going, you thought you had a plat or something showing that it was public use prior to 1970. Am I, am I right in that?
I think we moved beyond that one. Joe did bring that, and Matthew looked at that with VDOT legal counsel or whoever at Bristol and told us that it didn't qualify as a deeded right-of-way, that we'd have to go back through the right-of-way acquisition to get that, I think is what, when we were down there, Joe, is it?
Yeah, that, and the tax burden on that group using the short-term payback, I, I think that one's dead. I mean, we, we worked out a way for it to happen. I thought that was right-of-way. The deed says it's a right-of-way, but legal opinion has some language that I don't understand, I did tell you that I'd check and see if that old court case ever went to court, and it didn't. That, they worked it out before there was actual adjudication on that issue.
Was that pertaining to the public right-of-way?
Yeah. When the hunt club was using it and they forced that issue, it never actually went to court, so that, that didn't give it court status of being a right-of-way.
Connors Valley. I think we were going to talk to Mr. Kelly, and that project involved relocating two sections of that roadway away from a creek. We'd need right-of-way through his pasture land.
Well, I'd asked Steven, Steven, Mr. Dalton said I'd gotten it, but if I did, I didn't realize it. I don't think the board ever took any action on an extended payback. If, if, if that's got to be paid back in the short term and your budget's correct, I don't think the people would go for it. There's, I, I still think it's a viable solution to the flooding problem, and by tomorrow evening, may, we may wish we'd have done it. We get that three inches of rain, the motor grader better go down there today. But relocating those two patches with his approval, and when you say right-of-way agreement, is it a true legal swap, since that is a prescriptive easement, as you told me? When, when he agrees to move it up on that bench, is that a real right-of-way or is that a prescriptive easement?
It would have to be right-of-way.
Well, why would he ever do that? To get the road to not flood anymore is the right answer.
That's, that's it. If you want your project, we have to have the right-of-way.
Okay. If, if we get a new number that's more meaningful by extending that payback period, then we'll talk to him, and then is this a no-plan, or is this going to be just what we talked about of getting it out of those two major flooding areas?
I don't know how they would do that, Joe.
Okay.
It's a, I'd imagine it would have to go through the design phases. It wouldn't fall under rule rustic concept. It did have to go under the design, and that put it, we'd have to do the, the new wastewater regulations. I'd say it'd fall under that, too, so...
I think we were, call that one dead, too.
Are you saying it go under the new stormwater regs?
I believe so. I can check and verify, but I would say it would, is it's essentially a new road.
Well, when is somebody going to challenge?
Of course, if we don't hard-surface it, I'm not sure, so...
Jeff, when, when would somebody challenge the validity of this whole concept? Right now, we know what happens when it rains, don't we?
Pretty well.
The road runs in the creek, or the creek runs in the road. So, by relocating it out of the flowplain up on that bench, we will make that problem go away. But we put a stringent hurdle here that means it's never going to happen.
Very well.
I guess I'm just too logical to understand why this is good.
I'm not arguing with you. I can say that I agree with you on a lot of it. It's, it's, the new regulations have really hampered our efforts in, in improving a lot of roads, but it's just policy, the policy that we have to adhere to.
Now, we're good on Archer Road, aren't we? I do have a handgun with me.
The only thing we're waiting on, on that, is the fences, and we don't need additional right-of-way. Basically, the locations, and I provided you all a map, those locations, the road has to be shifted entirely to one side, and the fences are too close for us to be able to widen. We don't need additional right-of-way. We just need permission to take the fence down to do that widening. So, if, if we can get permission...
We're going to have a meeting over there with the affected folk. They don't mind you taking those old rotten fences down, but you're not going to put a new one back?
No.
Okay. I'll, I'll get that done quick. One, one of them has already approached me that although the fence is not good, they would like to have a new fence, but that's just not going to happen. And we're going all the way through with it.
My understanding, that's what we looked at out there is it's...
My understanding and your understanding needs to be the same. We will get along a lot if we do that.
I believe it's from hardtop on one end to hardtop on the other.
Okay, thank you.
One and a half miles, so...
You need that by February 1 to make it happen, or?
Just as quick as we can get it, we can get the ball, the quicker we get it, we can get the ball rolling. I don't have a, a set date on it, so...
Okay. What about, is there any holdup on that half-mile Miller Street?
Not at this point.
Okay.
Jeff, did the bids for Johnny Lane come in as you projected, or less, or four?
I do not still have that information. I don't know.
And I, I guess the only reason I ask that is if it was less, maybe you push some of these future roads up, these real rustics up a little faster if there was money reallocated.
Mr. Chairman, while he's here, I've got one request that would come up in supervisor time. I'd just like to get it over with.
Well, that's fine. We were going to move to that anyway next, but you can go ahead and get it over with.
Jeff, you know, when y'all, when you did Atkins Mill, or 646, that was two or three years ago. If you, if you leave Chapman Road, the speed limit's 25 till you get through the quarry. Then it's 35 up to the intersection of Ripley and Williams. Because it's not posted, all of Atkins Mill, legal speed limit's 55. Do you have to do that speed study thing and all that drawn-out thing, or will a board request that you post all of Atkins Mill at 35 or 45? 35 would be better. How can we get that road posted? I've had two complaints from... I've had two complaints from farmers and...
I would have to go through the traffic and engineering to get it posted, which basically they'll come out and look at it and...
They will drive it?
Yes.
They have to a speed study though, don't they?
How about driving through there at 55? That oughta make up for my fault.
I can, are you requesting that?
Yes, sir.
Do you wanna look at it?
Yep.
They do have to do a speed study. They come out and look at it, look at all the, what type of development, how many houses. I mean, they take it all into consideration, intersections and...
Do they take consideration of the problem there as a topo of the land?
Yeah, they look, they look at it all.
Twenty-two degree curves and humps that you can't see over. And the school bus running on that at 55 and farm vehicles with hayloads, it's just a really dangerous place. And two farmers have called me and asked whatever we could do, and they were referred by y'all's office that some magic that supervisors can make this happen. When they called up to your place, they said, get in touch with board supervisors, so.
Did we build that road, y'all built that road, the rural rustic standards? We didn't change any fencing or anything?
That's true.
If that's true, it's posted, it has to be posted 35 anyway from the rural rustic standards.
Well, you know, the last posting is on before you get to the Whipper Wheel intersection there at Soul Mill. From there, I drove it yesterday to make sure that I knew what I was talking about. I thought it did. There's no posting all the way through there.
But like Reed Creek Drive and these, all these that beat up snow, they posted on both ends, 35. They don't post it in the middle.
Sheriff, come on, guy. Your guys say they can't write a ticket because it's not posted. Now, they're saying if it's posted at both ends, it's posted. How about some tickets, bud?
I know in the past, it was good. One of them.
Where does the town Wimsky came?
Creek, it's a... But I'm pretty positive it was, it was a rural rustic job because we basically paved and did minor improvements. There wasn't any grading or anything to there, except those two curves where that house is the rough. We moved it just a little bit, down through the woods and everything.
Well, some fence line moved back and trees taken down? I can't recall.
Little places? Like Reed Creek Drive?
I think for Chapman Road.
Atkins Mill.
Okay. Jeff, if, and then I got a little side track. If we built that as rural rustic, we can post it 35 now. Do you know if it's posted at this point or not? They may or may not be up. I don't know. Is there signs up now?
No, there's, there's one right there that unless you look at the signs, when you get below that intersection of Whipper Wheel where it cuts off of Atkins Mill, depending on which way you're going, which road are you on? So Atkins Mill turns right there, it's Soul Mill. There's no posting from there all the way through there. Over there's that house on the right, that two-story house in the back curve. All the way through there, it's no posting. But is it posted on each end? If you consider that one down there beyond that, this side of that intersection, then it is, but there's not actually one on, on that section we're talking about. That's where the people want it posted, is something interim going over that hill past the racetrack there.
We did build that, we did build that in rural rustic. So that being said, and at your all's wishes, I'll go ahead and see that it posted, it posted at 35 on both ends. Now, as far as in the middle, normally we post both ends, the road's what, mile, two miles long, so.
Reed Creek Drive, it's one on both ends, it's one at Route 100.
That's probably one of the longer ones also.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, the sheriff's comment, I think, needs to get in this conversation, that the judge doesn't recognize that as a posting, and that's why they're not writing tickets. Is that what you said?
Yeah, they're in, they're in, they're in. Some type of postman beyond the end of the road. Continue to show 35 mile an hour line where we can help the judge that posts it at either end and at the center at 35. That's why the town has to change all their signs for a sign, big numbers, 35 mile an hour, unless otherwise. And that was the cost of the judge.
So I understand, coming out of town, it's 25. At some point, it changes to 35, but there's no sign up. So that's, I'll take a look at that and see if I can get a sign put up.
Somewhere that clearly says it's just 35 mile an hour.
Is this a policy issue? Is it about the cost of the sign?
Well, to me, the state law says the rural rustic is posted 35. And everyone we've done has been posted at both ends. It's not about the sign cost. To me, it's a policy issue to me for they post.
But law enforcement and the judge says if it's not posted, the speed limit's 55.
Well, I don't wanna disagree with the judge, but if a road's posted at 35 at the beginning of the road, unless there's a sign that changes it, it's 35 for the next change. That's in your little manual when you get strike. Yeah, when it's posted, it doesn't change till there's a new post.
Jeff, did you have anything else before I asked the supervisor?
No, I'll, I'll take any request or concerns at this point, I suppose.
Well, we'll do board of supervisors reports, and this is not just limited to VDOT requests. So if you had anything else you wanted to bring up during this time, but I'll ask Jeff to say, because the majority of it normally is VDOT request. And already, I'll start with you.
I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hill, you have anything else?
Oh.
No, sir, I don't.
Has, has there been anything done to New Town? The question, the gunner boy about his water runoff and going in his granny's basement?
VDOT approved that. I don't think it's happened yet. VDOT approved that building. We just haven't got the piece of equipment up there yet. It took a while for the, VDOT didn't require citizens or somebody.
I believe it was sprint, maybe citizens both.
Their own underground cable.
Yeah, I remember reading that.
And so they've done that, it's just us getting up there and that.
Okay. And the other one is, I guess all y'all know what that is. I did have some complaints, large gap in Route 94 over this.
Yeah, they're very, very regular, of course. Yeah. They're just making that on Friday nights, nobody shows up.
If we got some good Black Fridays in there, I'll take it home.
Turned out the day until there was a sign.
If you need any more, I can get you some more.
No, that's all I, one's all I need.
That is all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Horn. I have a list. The ditch on 21, you know what I'm talking about?
Cross from Waste Industries.
Cross from Waste Industries. VDOT put rocks and stuff in it. Are they done with it?
Pretty well.
Have they done all they're gonna do?
My understanding, they are.
Did they notify the landowner that they were done doing what they were gonna do and tell him what he could do?
I'm under, Mr. Fowler told me that he had talked with the proper downer, they were satisfied with what we did, and they were gonna fix their yard.
Okay. Cause I, I just, I just wanted to make sure that he knew that, that y'all were done and whatever was left was up to him. I wanna thank you for getting the speed limit changed on Cedar Springs Road. Had somebody comment on that the other day that she liked it. I have a question, though. Where does the 45 start? I know it starts in Speedwell at, right above the school. Where does it stop and, does it go all the way to Cedar Springs?
I'd have to pull the report. I was under the assumption, the study involved the intersection at Cedar Springs all the way to Speedwell, so I'd have to pull the study and look it over closer, but...
The only reason I was asking is I've, the first sign, I can't remember exactly now where the first 45 sign coming down from rural retreat is. And I would have, I would have expected there would be one right there at Cedar Springs, but it's a little ways on down the road. Right off the top of my head, I can't think of where it is now.
I can check on that. But my understanding was it was supposed to come all the way, pretty close to that intersection.
I mean, they've got about a million signs there at the intersection, so maybe they just didn't have a place to put another one. Francis Mill Road in downtown Cripple Creek. I was asked to check and see if we could do something about the speed limit down through there. As far as I know, it's not posted down through there that I know of. So I presume it's 55, and I mean, it's, the road may be as wide as those chairs are. And that's from house to house, not... I mean, if we need to do a speed study or if it's, I don't know how it was ever paved many, many years ago, so. The 619 project, I had, I had down pavement, but they went back and fixed the problem. They had a couple of problems, it looked like, where they'd put it down and it was coming back up. There's one culvert on the upper end next to Fleming Road. Are they gonna put guard rail or anything around it, or are they done, done?
If it's not there, I don't, I think the project's complete.
Cause I know when, when they did it, they tapered it in and made it, to me, it was too narrow when they tapered it, but they tapered it in and put concrete, and then I've, the lady, I had a lady call me in, or well, she talked to my wife and complained to her, and she said she had people call and complain about it, and they went back the other day and put rock over the top of the concrete to where there is like a little bit of a shoulder there, but I just figured they was gonna put guard rail up there. I had a complaint about the, on down the road, on Cripple Creek Road, there's a church down there, I forgot the name of it. It's down near Brother Moore's before you go into National Forest. There's a sharp right-hand curve.
Cripple Creek Church God Prophecy.
Yeah. She wanted to know if y'all could look about putting some Chevron signs or something there. Evidently, her husband bout, went straight and stood and turned right the other night, and she liked that hard pack. And the only other thing that I had was the road, road number signs at the corner of Gleaves Road and Cripple Creek Road is laying on the ground.
Cripple Creek and Gleaves?
Yeah. I guess somebody ran over it. It's the actual road numbers, not our road names.
I'll go ahead and request that speed study, and I'm sure a lot of y'all have seen it and questioned it, but... These old secondary roads that basically they went in there and just paved over and didn't improve, they are reluctant to put a speed limit on roads like that. Sometimes they will, a lot of times they won't.
And Jeff Bishop, Dalton just reminded me, we did have, and I don't know if, you know, if we can do this, we had a lady who lives on the, the retreat side between Cedar Springs and Retreat to, to talk about speeding and to request, you know, a, a speed study, if that's, if that's possible. That's 55 through there. I didn't realize that they changed 45 going to...
They've just changed it in the last month.
Okay. Now, I mean, that's a request that we had from, you know, from a citizen, and I, you know...
That really requires, I guess, a speed study forward request.
And that's, I think I'll answer somebody's question mentioned a while ago, why do we refer citizens to the county on speed studies? But we want the county's support and buying. I don't wanna go out and reduce the speed limit and then the county say, well, why did you do that, so?
Well, she said that y'all done such a good job posting Cedar Springs to speed and slowing down, she'd like just as many tractors on the road in front of her house.
That's a little bit, that's a little bit better road though from Cedar Springs to rural retreat.
Cedar Springs all the way to rural retreat. Do y'all support that? Y'all want me to move forward with it, or? I'm gonna have to leave for work earlier every morning.
I have to tell you personally, I don't think that changing that is going to, is gonna help. I'm afraid that, you know, everybody's driven it for so long, they're not gonna pay much attention to it. Plus, as Gene said, it's a little different road from, from Cedar Springs to Retreat than it is from Cedar Springs to, you know, to Speedwell. So I guess we can tell we took it under consideration. I just, I don't wanna be the one responsible for changing that to 45. My Jimmy Crickets, cause half the road would complain to me.
Wait, you just asked if it was Chapman Road, I'm gonna get a ticket on it, so it's a huge ticket.
You got another one to tell?
I wanted a clarification, if he knows, about that culvert. Where are we with that, Mr. Dalton, out there at the loop at the mines on 52 where we had the flooding?
Is that, is that the request for the, the water depth signage?
Yeah, y'all couldn't do it because nobody's grounded there yet or some reason like that, but...
We discussed that traffic and engineering and don't see the need. Basically, when you put those signs up, my understanding was it shows is the water six inches deep, one foot, two foot, how deep is the water over the pipe? It's not that often the water gets over the pipe in that location. Periodically, it does, and recently, we had two people with their vehicles got washed off. However, VDOT stance is if there's water in the road, you don't go through it, it don't matter how deep it is. So we're trying to create a liability if we put the depth signs up and say, it's only six inches deep, you go ahead and try it, so.
But that's not what we asked for. We asked for delineator signs that they could make their own judgment about whether it was water. See, it's easy for us to sit here and say, Jeff, and I'm not arguing with you, I'm just talking about, none of this makes sense. If that was out in the middle of an open stretch of road, you'd say, yeah, you can see it. But when you're meeting traffic in a storm there, head south on 52, and you turn to left, you're in that water before you have a chance to see whether it's there. It's the closeness to that intersection that makes it dangerous. And the real problem is the water, your pipe is good. The water builds up from below, and I thought we were talking to y'all about taking care of that problem. If it was a private landowner, we already know what we would have done to take care of that problem. I mean, if, if my...
As far as causing the backup?
Yeah. You know what's causing the backup?
It's the small pipes.
And if you go over there and look at it, there's full of debris and brush that I think, if you can't fix the drainage there that's inadequate, or I think it's inadequate, can you get a crew in there to clean all that restrictive brush out of it? It's, it's affecting how your pipe or your unit can function because water can't get out of there.
Even at best, Joe, if it's, yeah, we can look at cleaning the brush out and opening it up, but we're taking a seven-foot pipe and putting it down into a 30-inch pipe.
Yep.
I mean, it's...
Probably backs up right there, then.
That's, that's, the problem is the pipe that goes through that private land during heavy rains.
Been there for many years. I agree with that, but the brush don't help many.
I can... I can-